I'd like to call the meeting to order of the October 2nd, 2023 Board of Education Meeting. First, I'd like to ask Mr. Peace if he would lead us in invocation.
Thank you, yes ma'am. Let us bow. Thank you Lord for this day and all the time for us together and discuss the business of caring for children, staff, and parents of this county. As we do this, let us be mindful of the great responsibility we have to do things that is pleasing in your sight. These and all things we ask and pray for in your name, amen.
Amen. Dr. Fred, if you'd lead us in pledge.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands the nation of my God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on our agenda is if there are any changes to the agenda needed. If not, we'll take a motion to adopt the agenda as written.
Motion.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, I'd like to ask Dr. Winborn if he would give us his superintendent's report today.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Good evening, everyone, board members, team members, those in attendance and those joining video. It's hard to believe that it's October already, and this marks my fifth board meeting with you all as superintendent and officially the start of my fourth month in this position. And I'm happy to report that our school year is off to a very smooth start. Of course, this year, it is my desire, as it is for many of you and our many educators out there, to see a dramatic positive change in our academic outcomes for our students. And in order to do this, I've shared with you all many times and with our public about our district's focus on three priorities. And you'll indulge me, and at the risk of repeating myself, I'm going to go through them again. And you're going to hear more about it this evening in our reports. But if you think about things, our first real priority has got to be this issue of attendance. After all, students actually have to come to school first, right? If we want them to learn. And we've been tracking our attendance rates very closely and intervening with students and families when needed. And we also have some really wonderful incentive programs that are going on at all of our schools to help encourage and reward those students who are coming to school every day. So we're off to a very strong start in this regard. One aside related to attendance, and some questions have come up recently, so I thought I would address this publicly. Just so everyone is clear, we currently do not have any special COVID protocols in place, okay? Because there was a little recent confusion about this. We have no requirements for masking, for no requirements for isolation, quarantining, or vaccines for any of our students or staff. And COVID is simply being treated just like any other sort of seasonal illness right now. And of course, we'll keep a watchful eye on this and be sure to keep everyone informed. But I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware, as again, this has come up recently. So after attendance, our next priority, of course, is student behavior. And once we get our students to school, right? Then we have to create this orderly, safe, inviting environment for our children so that they can learn. Unfortunately, we've begun to see some fights and physical altercations in some of our secondary schools since the start of the school year. The numbers are actually not higher than previous years, they're lower. But the difference is that this year, we're taking a much stronger position on these behaviors. You may have heard through some of the messaging that's gone out about this to our families, making it clear that we are strictly enforcing our student code of conduct. And we're working very closely with law enforcement in those really serious situations when juvenile petitions or criminal charges may need to be brought. So we're working very closely with them. And I will say that this response on our part, it's been very well received by parents. We've gotten a lot of positive feedback about this. And a lot of positive feedback from our educators, who feel strongly supported with what they're doing in their classrooms every day. So I would just like to ask everyone listening tonight to please support us in this effort. We all must make our schools a safe place. We all play a part in that. And so I thank you for helping, because you know, school should be a place where everyone wants to be, you know? You don't miss out on the wonderful things that are happening. And of course, our final area is academics. That's huge. And thankfully, we're almost fully staffed. As Ms. Curran has continued to report to you, we are in a much better place than we were this time last year. Much, much different. And you can sense the difference in our schools. Not having all these vacancies is, it's relieved a lot of the pressure and stress and additional work that our educators would otherwise be doing. But we're working hard to support the teachers that are in place to make sure that they're following the standard course of study and that they're using our local curriculum and that they're planning their instruction each and every day. And of course, we do this through walkthroughs, our walkthrough tool. You've heard me talk about this before, but this year, it's revised a bit. And it's, you know, this is how we monitor what's happening. And then the data that we collect from that, we're using to respond to these students' needs. Because we got to make sure every single minute of instructional time is spent wisely. So again, these are our three areas, and all of our principals are very tuned into this. When you see the school improvement plans that are brought to you at the work session on October the 16th, you're going to see the strategies and different tactics they have in there reflected in these goals. So I look forward to you guys being able to sit with them and have really meaningful conversations with them about what's happening in their schools. And Mr. Perry will be providing additional detail about how that's going to work. But I just want to thank all of our team of school leaders and district leaders for their work in this area, because we have a lot to do, we really do. We have a lot of ground to make up, and I believe we can do it. So I look forward to a productive agenda this evening, and thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Winborn. On behalf of the board, I want to welcome everyone here tonight and those joining us by live stream. As Dr. Winborn has said, Grahamville County Schools is focused on improvement in the areas of safety, academics, and behavior. I'd like to publicly commend Dr. Winborn and his executive team for all of the hard work that they have put in and done in all of these areas. I also want to commend all of our educators and support staff for getting our children off to a good start this school year. Our schools already have had activities to involve parents. This month, our middle schools and high schools will be having student emeritus ceremonies. We encourage our parents and the community to follow Grahamville County Public Schools on social media and on our school district's website. There, you will find a wealth of information about our school system and the many wonderful things going on in our schools, and many are featured on our website. Fall sports are also in full swing, so we encourage everyone to come out and support our athletic teams. The North Carolina General Assembly has just recently passed the state budget, so our departments and administrators are busy working on finalizing the proposed budget for the 23-24 school year to present to the board at its December meeting. Again, we thank you for your interest and your presence as we conduct the business of Grahamville County Public Schools. And that concludes my remarks. Next, we are going to have reports from board members, and I'll start off myself. This past week, I was able to visit Careers on Wheels that took place at Buttonless STEM Middle School. Students in grades five and eight were bused in from across the county to see opportunities that are available in areas that involve transportation. It was really fun to watch the kids. They were very excited to see some of the big equipment, the trucks, and the people presenting certainly interacted very well with the students. Like to thank Tamara Rodabaugh and her CTE team for their hard work in making this event so successful. Also, several members of the board attended the Grahamville County Education Foundation's Pig and Raffle Event, which is one of the many fundraisers that this organization has. The Grahamville Ed Foundation donates a lot of money for teacher grants in our school system, as well as funds for literacy initiatives. Dr. Winborn, board members Peace and Hayes and myself attended a symposium at McKinnon Center sponsored by the North Carolina School Board Association for an update on current education issues facing public schools in North Carolina. The sessions were very informative and helpful. As Ms. Hayes was able to attend both days, I'm asking her to share a few comments about the symposium. This past week, I attended a broadband forum sponsored by Representative Sossiman. I was interested both personally and as a board member. Information about a grant that Grahamville County has received to expand services to families without access or inadequate service was shared with the attendees. Information about this grant and where these funds will be directed can be found on the state of North Carolina's IT website, technology website. We also have attached to our agenda the minutes from each of the committee meetings that were held in September. The committee's meeting were finance, operations, policy, and our newest committee, the Human Resources Innovation Committee. Several items on our agenda tonight are items that were covered in these meetings. The HR Innovation Committee is requesting that our dress code policy tonight for employees be changed. Tonight, we are excited to have a revised dress code policy to bring to you to vote on. You may have noticed that in support of our wonderful teachers and staff, and for this policy change, board members are dressed in their jeans. At this time, we will hear reports from other board members. Ms. Hayes?
Well, you covered a lot. Thank you, that was wonderful. So I did get to attend both days of the North Carolina Association of School Administrators Conference. And the first day was, it's pretty much all legislative updates, just about, for the entire day, which was quite all encompassing. Unfortunately, our General Assembly had not at that time passed a budget, and so everything was still a little up in the air as to what exactly, you know, they were being kind of conservative about the information that they were giving. So the majority of the day was spent going over Supreme Court decisions. And then also, there was a lot of talk about the Parents' Bill of Rights and how that was going to affect public school districts. So that was super informative. The thing that I really noticed was that, you know, when they were bringing us information about what was going to be required for the Parents' Bill of Rights, was that Grahamville County actually already does a lot of those things. And so I felt like, I felt really good about where we were as a public school district, about transparency and our policies that we already have in place, and that we were only going to have to make a few minor adjustments and changes to be in compliance. So that was really informative.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes, good afternoon, or good evening to everyone, actually. As you said, she covered quite a bit, because I did also attend the pig rally, you know, the Educational Foundation, that was great. I was also there at Buttonless STEM for Career on Wheels, that was great. As a matter of fact, myself and Mara Sorokin got there at the same time, so we stayed together throughout the process and went around and talked to all of the participants, the vendors, and just thanked them for being, you know, just coming out and talking to our students. So we really did have a great time there, talking to the various vendors. And then, of course, I attended the broadband session as well. And also, being on the policy committee, as she mentions, a lot of great items on there that we had discussed when we had our working session. So it's been a great week.
Thank you. Dr. Fred? Mr. Peace?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. We had an adoption committee meeting on the 14th last month, and the primary discussion was about the aquatic center pool kind of deal that we are still in conversation with the city about. No decision has been made, and we are sort of making sure we get all our ducks on the road before we commit to anything or talk about committing to anything. That's all.
I have much to report. I am now a reading buddy at West Oxford School. I meet with those kids every other Monday, helping improve reading skills, which is very important throughout the curriculum here. I also attended a football game at the Web, I guess about a few months, a few weeks ago here, and there was a fight there, but the kid was removed as a parent. They were called to take the kid home based on that behavior there. So I'm very happy that we own that on all types of our events here, after school and after school as well, let kids know that we are serious about, make sure we have a very safe environment during sport events as well as during the school day. Thank you.
I want to just add one thing, what you just mentioned. I am also in the reading buddy program in my first, Wednesday will be my first time to work with my student, to listen to my student read. Looking forward to it.
I haven't started yet, but I'm supposed to start in a couple of weeks. That's going to be fun.
Yes.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is item 3.04, election cycle update. You will recall that the issue of this brought up about changes, possible changes to the election of school board members in the future, and because of some court actions in the past, we asked that our attorney Dubison just kind of present to us what's involved in any changes that could be made or how they could be made if the board so wanted to go in that direction. Okay, I'm going to take one and pass it around.
Board members, I sent you this information in email as well. So I'll just provide a brief summary. I was asked to bring back some information on what would be involved if the board was interested in seeking to move its election date from the primary to the general election. And so, as you know, your current election cycle is governed by two things, local legislation and a consent decree from 1989 from a Voting Rights Act case, which there was a case involving the commissioners and also one involving the Board of Elections, so there's separate decrees there. But they both set the election cycle and the Board of Elections, I'm sorry, the Board of Education's election date is set as the date of the primary for county officers. And it has been, prior to that, it was at the primary date since the board was merged in 1961. So to change the election date, there's two things that would be involved. One is, of course, just moving the date, but the other is currently, you have a runoff system in your election. So the Board of Education election, everyone gets on the ballot. If no one gets a majority, then one of the candidates who did not get a majority, who was the runner-up can seek a runoff. And then that's scheduled for the second primary date, which I believe is generally in May. So if you were to switch to having your elections in November with the terms starting in December, I think it would be likely that you would need to look at changing to a primary instead of a runoff. So right now, you have the election, and then you can have a runoff after. Those elections that are in November have a primary first, so in order to narrow down the list of candidates. So you mentioned that Franklin County had made this change this year, and so what they have changed to is all of the candidates go on a nonpartisan primary ballot during the primary election, and then that narrows it down to two that go on the general ballot in November. So the filing window would probably still be similar, because they would need to know the candidates in time for the primary. It's just sort of a reverse of the order. So what would be involved in making that change would be, one, you would need local legislation similar to what Franklin did, but because your court order both has the runoff system and the date, we would need to amend that as well. I don't have any reason to think that there would be an objection to that from the other parties, but it does mean that it would take a little bit of time to, you know, we would have to file a motion, but we would have to seek the, hopefully, seek the consent of the other parties, which is the federal government, the Department of Justice, and the Board of Elections. And then file a motion in the court asking that the consent decree be modified. So that's what would be involved, and we've done it before with your term length. The, I did note on the last page here that your consent decree does not say that your members must be sworn in in December. And so if you wanted, if your concern is the length of delay between the election and the swearing in, which has increased as North Carolina has moved its primary from May to March in recent years, you could, with just local legislation, change your swearing in date from December to early, presumably July. And there are several school districts in North Carolina that have the primary election date where the new members are sworn in the first Monday in July instead of December. So that, because that's not in your court order, that, I think, could be accomplished just with a local bill.
Would you have to do that starting with a new cycle, or you would be shortening someone's term?
You would be shortening someone's term by a few months. I don't think you would have to wait until everyone plays out their current terms to do that, but I would probably have to research that to be sure. Just given that, you know, the term is set by statute, to me, I would think it could be amended in that way by statute. We did wait when we changed the terms from six years to four years, that being such a significant change.
Do you have any idea what the reasoning was between having the county commissioners elected in one method and the school board elected in a different method if they were both named in the same suit?
I don't. The, I mean, the commissioners have the primary, well, I can think of one reason. The commissioner election is partisan, and so it has partisan primaries, so those are on the earlier date. And then a second round to do the general. I don't know, I haven't looked pre-1961 to see if the Boards of Education were elected in the spring prior to that. I suspect they were, but I don't know.
But there are other districts, right, that are moving it to the general but still keeping it not part, as a nonpartisan?
It's certainly possible. Franklin is the only one I know offhand, but yes, it is possible. Again, then they have what's called a nonpartisan primary.
Before the lawsuit was done, everybody ran countywide.
That's right.
No district, so that did two things. It made the seven districts.
That was the main purpose of the lawsuit.
Yeah. And it also had a couple of minority districts that had to be worked on, worked into that. That's how we got to be, the seven districts was formed really. And that applied to commissioners and.
That's right. Both were at large, and that was what was challenged under the Voting Rights Act, and the resolution was to divide the county into districts.
At some point before we move forward, this, wouldn't we have to decide if the board whether we wanted to do it or not? And I would suppose that we need to, well, I need to go through this information that I've just gotten before making a decision about that.
I would expect that any change would not, I think, having the court order amended by the 2024 election is, well, certainly not before the primary. I think that would be ambitious, but because of how the legislative sessions are, I don't think you could have local legislation by then anyway. So it would be 2026.
I guess I want to probably ask a question again, the reason behind the change? The goal of what we're trying to achieve, you were to try to change how things are done now. What is the goal? The reason behind the conversation?
Yeah, I mean, the goal is the same, is that it just gets more people voting. I mean, every race, socioeconomic, I mean, like economic status, I mean, every single metric tracking voter participation goes up in the general election compared to the primary election. And that's, I mean, just from 2022 stats. On top of that, if more elections are starting to move towards the general election, I mean, I think it's just, if that's what is the normal, what the expected is, all of those things, just getting more people to vote and participate, one is the victory. That is all, the only reason why I'm trying to get this to happen is that it just gets more people on the ballot, or to the ballots, because that's, you know, what our job is as elected officials, is to represent our constituents. And then also, just, what word do I want to use? I mean, just the, I mean, normalcy is the best maybe that I can think of. It's just that everybody knows that the voting happens in November for everything, so it just makes it so the school board is in line with that, rather than, I mean, every single time I was at the ballot and talking to folks, I mean, I wish I had, you know, a punch card every single time that I, somebody would leave the ballots last election cycle when I was there, and they just said, you know, like, hey, I don't want to, they're on the way in and they're saying, hey, I don't want to talk, I know what I'm going to do. And then on the way out, I'd say, you know, hey, whatever, you know, the district or the District 7 School Board rep, you know, it's good to meet you or whatever, and they're like, you know, hey, I wish, you know, I'll make sure that I vote for you in November. It's like, this was the entirety of it. I mean, and it wasn't less than 50, it was like more than 50, more than 100 times I talked to folks that wished that they knew. And this is just up the street at the library in Creedmore. So, I mean, it's just experience from the last, in the only campaign that I've ran here, as well as just general numbers improving the participation. Those are the two things.
Madam Chair, let me just say a couple of things here about this, because I'm concerned about the changing of the election cycles. I've been through a few of those, probably four. And campaigns for me is about getting the people in your district to.
Point of order. I'm sorry, parliamentarian, can you please address policy number 2340 and the fact that we're supposed to go and give everybody the opportunity to speak either for or against before somebody speaks again? Is that the correct interpretation?
What was your question? I didn't understand the question.
I think her question was, are members supposed to be, is debate supposed to give everyone a chance to speak once before it's been asked? May I carry on?
I'd love to hear from Ms. Anderson or Ms. LeBrack, if either one of them had anything to offer.
With regards to what we're discussing, I, you know, have read some things on it. I've listened, because of course, when things have changed in the past, as far as where we are right now, and basically doing the primary and the general, it, to me, I think that we've been doing this for a while now, and to the point that the voting folks, voters out there, have this. voters out there have this now, that they know that this happens at this point. Also, I know Ms. LeBrack and I came on at the same time, and she did mention about the length of time we had to wait before we did get, you know, actually sworn in. But I definitely think you mentioning that that does not have to be the case. You can in fact get sworn in a lot earlier, four, five, six months earlier than, you know, the timeframe that we got sworn in. My statement on this, if it's not broke, don't fix it. And I don't think this is broken.
I don't know that I, I feel a strong way, one way or the other, to be perfectly honest. I have to say that, like, I think the length of time, that was frustrating to me, whenever I had to wait such a long period of time to rotate onto the board. That was probably the biggest frustrator for me. I mean, statistically, I'm not against, you know, more voters. I know myself personally did not. I never voted in anything other than a general election until I became more aware of what was going on. And so, but that was just me. But I'm sure that other people probably could feel the same way. But yeah, I, again, I'm not super strong one way or the other. I just feel that whatever is in the best interest of the most people is the way we should go.
Can I ask a, just a clarification question?
Sure.
Okay, sorry. The best interest of the most voters?
Voters.
Okay.
I guess.
So, I haven't, I asked a question, but, so I'm just going to stick with what I think the, the original purpose, as I interpreted, of, of the discussion was. And the simple fact remains is that we had 22,500 people approximately participate in the 2022 general election. And the primary election, we had about 8,500 people participate. And that's, that's a huge difference in the amount of voter participation. And I understand that everybody has the opportunity to participate in the primary. I get that. I'm not disagreeing with that statement at all. I just think that it's well-known that the majority of people choose or, or don't understand that that is where our election is. And, you know, whatever this board decides to do, if we decide to stay with the primary, I would hope that maybe we could do a better job of, of making that information more well-known, or whether we decide to move it to the general and give, you know, those, you know, 22,000 people the opportunity to vote in, in our election process. But, so either, either one of those, whatever this board decides to do in the future, and as, you know, I understand that whatever discussions we have, or whatever we decide, it'll take time if we decide to move forward with any, anything, which is completely understandable. It took time with the term changes. And, you know, I'm open to giving people time to digest this or dive further into it, if that's what they feel like they need to do before they have any more discussion later on about it.
I would agree with Ms. Hayes that we want people to understand how the election works. And I think that's, that's a key thing, how it works right now. I have a couple of concerns. I think it's great to want to get as many people to vote as possible. But what I don't want to see, and I'm not saying this as a member of one party or the other, because I'm unaffiliated, I don't want to see our school board, because we're nonpartisan, to become more partisan. And I think a change like that might have that result. You get a bunch of people that are going to vote, and there'll be a voting for governor, president, whatever, may not even know any of the issues with the school board, but they vote because it is a party person, or they feel like this person or that person is supported by a particular party. I'd just like to see the school board be interested in boys and girls and families, and doing what we can for them, and not get too far in the weeds with the politics part. And I know it's hard to keep it out, because that's just the way things seem to be going these days. But I'm concerned about that. The other concern I have is I feel like that this was a big deal in Graham County in the 1980s. And before we go too far into looking at it further, I think probably we are going to hear from the community, and we need to. Because if people feel that they aren't being represented well, or they feel like a change would some, in some way, hurt.
Hurt them.
Then I think we need to hear that. I'm not saying it would or it wouldn't, I'm just saying we need to listen to our community as well. All, all parts of our community. So that's sort of my thought on it right now.
Thank you. Am I, am I speaking? Madam Chair? Thank you.
You can go ahead.
The, the thing that concerns me is in campaigning, I've ran a few of those over the last 30 years, and in my district, in any district, the number of people that comes out to vote really depends on how well you campaign and how important you feel like campaigning is. As a general rule, there's always been and will always be, I would think, more people in the general election than it is in a primary. And, you know, in, for the years to come, getting people to run for the school board was a monumental task. Of course, all that's changed now, because the board, for, I guess, 10 or 12 years, I didn't realize that we had Democrats and Republicans on the school board. We all, you know, was here about children, and that didn't come up. But anyway, at this point, you know, I, I think if you have a concern about the number of people that's voting for you, maybe it's because you're not knocking on enough doors, you're not putting out enough flyers, you're not communicating enough with the people that, that's in your district. Therefore, I don't see, with the time that's allowed for early voting and voting, that anybody that wants to vote for a school board member, the President of the United States, whoever's running, have an opportunity to do that. And you can make it as convenient as you want to be, but people that's not going to vote is not going to vote. So as a politician, it's our job to convince people to come out and vote for us. And until we decide that we're going to do that, the turnout's going to be low, unless it's some hot topic going on, then, you know, people pay attention to that. And that's what's going on now. You know, there's a lot of stuff that's going on now that's not really about children. And I'm here to tell you that we need to keep that in our forefront as we make decisions and as we go about doing what we were elected or appointed to do. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I think probably course of action at this point would be for everybody to study the material that we have, do whatever research you want to do, and we may hear from the community, we may not, but I feel like it's too important to, to rush into anything at this point. Thank you, Attorney Dubison.
Sorry, Madam Chair, if I could say one last thing. Just as a general question, I've been sitting here thinking, I can't for the life of me remember. I feel like at the, in the fall of last year, we sent out some survey to parents, and I can't remember what it was. That's what I'm, I'm trying to remember. But we specifically said that we were going, oh, it was renaming Holly's campus, the new Holly. We put out all the different options so we could figure out which one we were going to go with. Not that whatever the top vote getter was, we made a very clear understanding, that doesn't mean this is what we're going to improve. But we could always just check the pulse of the community and send out a survey and say if this would be helpful or a good idea to the community members or something. And that doesn't mean we're going to do anything, but then we could at least check the pulse to see if this is something that would move the needle, move, you know, more interest any of those things. Again, I'm not trying to use this as any kind of, you know, campaign tool or agenda or anything. I just think it's, I, I mean, I saw a problem, which was, hey, I wish I knew something differently, and I felt, you know, behooved to bring it up. That's all it is. So if that's something that would solve a problem, we could ask. And if not, we would know right then and there if it's even wanted in the community. And again, we don't have to follow what it says, but we would then at least know.
We'll take that under consideration.
Things of, things of this nature, the community normally shows up at some point and have an opinion.
And that's, I think, it's a lot of time and energy to themes that I think our time is spent doing something else. It's important, but it'd be worth coming in and voicing here at one of our public meetings here. Do a survey, calculate the results, see it, get the back here throughout all these seven, throughout Graham County here. It'll take some time, and just someone has to coordinate that. And I feel there's things that we could be concerned more with than changing the date that we, this election is held. It's important, but I think it's more things, I think, supersede that, that request or idea.
Everybody can take this information and digest it, and we'll see. We come back next time if anyone wants to pursue it further. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the new minutes format. I'm going to let Dr. Limbore discuss that for us.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Tonight, we're bringing this to you as an information item. This is a topic that we had discussed previously, and I am excited to announce that effective as of tonight's board meeting, the clerk to the board, Ms. Shave, will no longer be drafting the written long-form minutes for each board meeting. And as you all know, this was an extremely time-consuming exercise that she was engaged in. So instead, the indexed video and audio recordings that are in board docs and posted on, also on our district YouTube's account, they're going to serve as the primary authoritative source for everything that occurs in these official meetings. And I'm going to ask, request the technology department, please archive an additional copy of the video recording in a secure location, so that, you know, if we lose, something happens with board docs, we will have these backed up. And in addition, once approved, Ms. Shave can nota, annotate the minutes, or, excuse me, the motions and the votes in board docs as we go. In fact, she usually does that in real time. And then those are also, just for quick reference, you can see them. But the content of any other board meeting, committee meeting, or other official Board of Education business that's not video recorded, we will, of course, continue to take written minutes. So thank you all for allowing us to streamline this process, and I don't think it will place any limitations on transparency. As of now, they can see it all. Congratulations, Ms. Shave.
And I, because I've had the question, I, this is an information item, because the board actually adopted a policy allowing for video minutes a couple of years ago, and we just haven't implemented it yet, so.
Thank you.
How long do you think it takes to transcribe one of the coordinated?
It, of course, depends on the meeting.
One of the longest.
It, it, it takes, a single meeting takes a lot of a day for her, a large part of a day for her to get it right.
And we appreciate everything you've done doing that. But I think this will be a better use of your time to do something else. And this, this should cover it. And I like the fact that we have the backup system too. I think that's important. All right. Item 3.06, GCPS Policy Revisions. I'd like to take a policy, two policies in particular, and do those first. The first one is the grievance procedure for employee. I'd like to see us, if we could, maybe do this on a first read, and you've had a chance to read it. Would you like to address what it mainly changes for us, Ms. Dubison?
Sure. So the update to the grievance policy, which is 1750, just clarifies that if the grievant is making a grievance against their supervisor, they don't have to go first to the same supervisor. In that case, they would take it.
Pretty simple and certainly needed. The second policy we want to address before we get into the others would be the employee dress and appearance policy. We're excited about this policy. Policies generally aren't very exciting, but this one is. This one is. The Human Resource Innovation Committee discussed this, and we were of the opinion, we have given teachers and staff opportunities throughout the year to wear jeans on certain days, certain weeks, and so forth. And we're not talking about ratty tattered jeans, ones with the holes, and we're talking about neat jeans and that kind of thing. And many of our teachers down in the floor with young kids too. And Ms. Hayes made a good point that it might cheap, make wardrobe a little cheaper for our new teachers. But they will still have a dress code as far as administrative things on what can be done and not done, and we've gotten a copy of that. So do I have a motion to, and we're, I think all of us are wearing our jeans tonight. Yay. Do I have a motion to accept these two policies as written on a first read?
May I, no question. When you say on first read, do you mean and skip second reading?
Yes.
Okay.
We're going to skip second read.
So move skipping second read, yes.
We'll waive it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Ladies and gentlemen, wear your jeans if you so choose. Okay. Now we'll go back to the other policies, starting with 1310402, parental involvement, if you want to go through those.
Sure.
Okay.
So the, these policy updates are to comply with the Senate Bill 49, Parents' Bill of Rights. For the most part, these were updates that were recommended by the North Carolina School Board Association with some customizations that came from your policy committee. So we'll start with 1310. And some of this is just updating the, the language. And then what you'll see is the updates in red were made by the School Board Association with some, what shows up in orange was determined by the policy committee in consultation with me. And so, in general, these are updates that add more detail to our parental involvement policy and that add some of the specific information that parents are entitled to under the new legislation. I will note that on, there's a lot struck out in orange on pages four and five. The School Board Association template had included the full list of everything that needs to go in of the Parents' Guide to Student Achievement. And our discussion was that because this is a brand-new law, there's still updates being made to it, we didn't feel it was necessary to list everything in policy. This is a, the Parents' Guide to Student Achievement is something that will be, we will get a template and guidelines from the state board. Every district across the state will have those same guidelines, and then we'll fill in our local information. So we didn't think it was necessary to list in policy everything that's going to be. Would you, shall I go through all of them?
Yeah.
Are there any questions about 1310? This is a good policy to be familiar with. If you get questions from parents about either how they can get involved or seeking some of the information that's listed in the Parents' Bill of Rights, if you can direct them to this policy, it should contain pretty much all of that information that they might be looking for.
Ms. Dubison? May I interject, Madam Chair? I would just like to mention that on our district's website, under the parent heading, there's a dropdown, and the very first item is the Parents' Bill of Rights. And per attorney, Dubison's guidance, we have made that sort of the authoritative one-stop-shop for this.
Yes. So as, the part of the Parents' Bill of Rights is a lot, a lot of, a list of types of information that parents are entitled to request. And so we've created this one website sort of landing page where principals can send parents, where parents can find it themselves and find most of that information at their fingertips. So moving on, the next one we have here is Policy 3210. This is our process for parents seeking to review instructional materials and also parents who wish to make an objection to the use of a certain instructional material in the classroom. And this is an existing policy. We have long had a policy allowing for that, but the language is updated to reflect the Parents' Bill of Rights, particularly the 10-day timeline for principals to provide information in response to parent requests. And then an addition that was suggested by Ms. Hayes on the first page at the bottom is that, just a clarification, that if a parent just wants their own child to be exempted from a certain reading or a certain activity, there's a different policy for that. If it's based on religious belief, they don't have to go through a whole, like, objection if it's just a matter of seeking to exempt their own child for religious reasons. The next one we have is 3540. This is our health education policy, and part of the Parents' Bill of Rights is emphasizing the right of parents to withhold consent for their students to participate in the reproductive health and safety curriculum or just portions of it. That is a longstanding right. That is not new, but it, but it is in the list of rights that parents will receive from the Parents' Bill of Rights. What we have added here that's new is the prohibition on instruction in certain topics in kindergarten through fourth grade. The next policy here is 4335, Criminal Behavior. This just notes a new requirement. We've updated our list of reportable offenses here, which is at the bottom of the first and the top of the second page. These are the offenses that principals are required by law to report to law enforcement. I will note that principals can and do report many other things to law enforcement. This is just a longstanding list that's in statute that, you know, the principals are actually in violation of law if they don't report. But it does not limit the ability of principals to notify law enforcement about any other potential criminal activity on campus. And then what's new from the Parents' Bill of Rights is actually the last paragraph that principals must notify the parents of the suspected victim if there is suspicion that a criminal offense has been committed on campus. And so in, in working with the principals and doing a training on the Parents' Bill of Rights, I gather this is already commonly their practice, but now we've got it codified in policy. The next policy is 4720, Surveys of Students. This, again, is a policy that you have had for a long time, but one thing that the Parents' Bill of Rights has done is there's been a longstanding federal law called the Protection of People Rights Amendment that provided that if students were going to be surveyed about a list of eight protected topics, that there had to be notice to parents and an opt-out. So what the Parents' Bill of Rights did was import that same list into state law, but turned it into a requirement that parents must opt-in. And so we have updated the policy to reflect that. So the parent consent is required for any surveys on those topics. And then the bill contains a more strict requirement for K through three that any student well-being questionnaire or called screening form in grades K through three, parents have to be, you have to have parent consent to administer. Questions about that one? Policy 6120, Student Health Services. The update here is actually just technical updates to the legal references and, and State Board policy. I will note that the Parents' Bill of Rights contains a provision on parent consent for medical treatment, requiring that parents must have, must be asked for prior consent and give prior consent before children can receive any medical treatment from a healthcare provider, which includes school nurses. And that has caused some consternation because it was unclear what nurses are supposed to do in the, in the event that there needs to be a life-saving intervention and the parent can't be reached, or it's not practical to reach the parent. For instance, a child has anaphylaxis and they need to administer an antipyreticant. The budget bill does contain a fix to that part of the Parents' Bill of Rights that clarifies that the existing exemptions for school employees to give first aid or life-saving treatment are preserved. So our hope is that that will stay in the, in the final budget and that that at least will be, that will be of reassurance to our school nurses. And then finally, Policy 7300, Staff Responsibilities, has a couple of updates. So there's a paragraph here after the bullet points. First, number six, support parents in effectively participating in their child's education and not encourage or coerce a child to withhold information from their parent. That is part of the Parents' Bill of Rights. The next paragraph is something that has actually been in the School Board Association policy for a while, but hadn't, our policy was not up to date, which is a requirement that employees report any criminal charges that they themselves get to HR immediately. And this is something that does come up, and it is important to have that requirement in policy because then, you know, you have the issue of the employee being charged, but you also have the issue of truthfulness sometimes about that that we need to contend with. So those are the updates to 7300. So that second part is not from the Parents' Bill of Rights. It's just an update that was recommended, and since we're in the policy, we might as well add that one. Some questions about 7300?
Do you have any idea or inkling that anything may change before the legislature goes home that would impact any of our changes?
I don't think that any of the changes I'm aware of in the budget bill would impact our policy changes. The budget bill contains delays of implementation of some of the deadlines in the Parents' Bill of Rights. And I've seen in the media sort of reporting that it delays implementation of the Parents' Bill of Rights, and that's not entirely accurate. A lot of the substantive provisions are already in effect, but some of the paperwork deadlines and the policy deadlines are delayed in the budget bill. But it doesn't change, you know, like, what policies you have to have. It just gives a little more time to that.
Any other questions? This has been presented as a first read?
Motion to approve policies as presented in first read.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And just for informational purposes, the policy committee will be bringing policies most every meeting, probably. We are in the process of reviewing the entire policy manual and started, this started, I guess, year before last, but it's, it's time-consuming, but it's something that's needed to do, and it's probably a good thing, the timing of it right now with all of the changes. So thank you for those that sit through that policy. Okay, our next item is public comment.
Sherwin Williams, we have one person who has signed up for public comment, and we do not have any electronic public comment at this time. So we will have, and I apologize in advance if I mispronounced the name, but Jackie Olshaper will.
Great good.
Will speak on November election issue and test scores, and you will have five minutes. I'll let you know when you have a one-minute warning.
Thank you.
Good evening. I wanted to address two items this evening. At the September 11th School Board meeting, there was a discussion about moving the School Board elections from the primary date in March to the November general election, which I have to say was misrepresented in the newspaper, but. And then you had your discussion tonight, which was, I enjoyed listening to because you all have good points of view. When I heard about it, though, it really made a lot of sense to me. Having come from and lived in many different states because we were prior military and moved around a lot, I always wondered why you had this election in March. It just seemed odd to me, and then that the people weren't sworn in until December. So I was, like I said, it made a lot of sense to me. In my mind, currently, the School Board election is sort of an anomaly being held in March because it's, it's almost like you don't want people to know that it's even on the ballot. When the school board is elected in March, and that's the only election where that's the final, you know, that's the final election for that group of people, you know, whether it's commissioners or, you know, city council or whatever it is, it just seemed odd to me and a lot of other people who come from other places, other than, and those of you that have lived here your whole lives or have been associated for many years, you know, you know the history behind what, what happened. I'm not as familiar with that, but I think there comes a point when sometimes we do need to make a change. And it just seemed to me that the more people that vote for the representatives that are in this room from their individual district, I just feel like that is really important, that we get as many people in our community involved and voting for all the positions in our community, not just some. And I, I think school board election should be a priority since it's the children that are our future, and the decisions that are made are essential to that future. So to me, I just feel we want as many people in the community as involved as possible. The other item I want to address was the, sorry to say it, the abysmal test scores that I saw last School Board meeting. It kind of makes me physically sick to think of all the individual children that that data represents. It's utterly sad for all those children to be so unsuccessful. And I really think that you need to put your heads together and come up with some new strategies because what you've been doing the last two years has not made an impact. And the needle doesn't have, doesn't seem to have changed much. In fact, in a few cases, it seems to have regressed. Please, as a board and as an administration, study more closely what's happening. We really need to find a solution to this problem for the sake of all of those children. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is consent items. We have 401, Request for Approval for Disposable of Surplus Property. I assume that all of you have read it, but if you have questions, you may want to answer them. Have them answered. Does anybody have a question about it? Anybody want to make a motion to approve?
Motion to approve all the surplus property.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we move along to item five, Academic Success. I will turn that over to Dr. Winborn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to ask Mr. Jamar Perry and his team to come to the podium and share with everyone their updates tonight to address our fundamental concern, the progress, the academic progress of our students. So, Mr. Perry?
Thank you, Dr. Winborn. Good evening, members of the board and to the public that's watching this evening. Tonight, we want to provide you with some academic updates for the first portion of the school year. A little bit of it is a bit of a rehash, but also want to share information about one of our first data sets that we received thus far, which is the beginning of the year, third-grade reading assessment data, and also talk about other academic information, behavior, and attendance. And we'll start with the learning walks. So learning walks are not new here in the district. We call them classroom walkthroughs. Our principals, administrators, our district staff, we go into classrooms and we observe what's going on. It's a short, quick observation of what's actually happening in the classroom. It's an opportunity for us to go in as administrators, as instructional leaders, to really capture and see, capture data to see what's happening in the classroom. Lots of good information there. It's research-backed. A lot of prominent educator researchers have really backed the practice of going in and actually seeing what's happening in classrooms. It does have an impact on our data because you're inspecting what you expect, but you also, you're using that data to drive instructional decisions. Also, we know that we want to make sure that our teachers are teaching to the core curriculum. They're using the actual curriculum materials that have been purchased by the district, and that's one way we can kind of find out what's actually happening. All right, so our next slide. So what are some of the things that we're looking for when we actually walk into these classrooms? We're looking for a clear learning objective. What's actually being taught? Is it aligned to the standard course of study? Because that's what we are teaching. We're not teaching anything additional, but we're aligning our curriculum to the standards. And what's being taught to the, to the standards and to the curriculum? Are students engaged? Are students just implicitly doing work at their seats? Or actually, or they're actually involved in academic talk? Does a conversation or activities that they're working on actually have an impact with what they're learning? When you go in and ask a student, can you tell me what's happening and what you guys are learning? And they can provide you with that feedback as well. So you're also monitoring their student behavior because we know that the behavior impacts the academics. The students are misbehaving, the classroom management inside of the classroom, what that environment looks like. Because you want to make sure the students have an engaging environment, one where it's conducive to learning, because we want to make sure students are well-behaved and the teachers have an opportunity to focus on teaching and not correcting, oftentimes with behavior. Providing feedback. Lately, when we've gone in, we've actually collected that data, and we send the teacher a quick little email following through what we saw. We know it's a positive and any questions that we may have. Well, I noticed that one set of students were working on this, this activity. Was this a differentiated activity based on these students' needs? So that teachers oftentimes will respond back to us, and they'll tell us exactly what is, what's been occurring. The rigor. Is it just easy work? Is it just baby work? Is it just very basic work? Is it actually something that's going to challenge students to push them to the next level? We do have high expectations for the work that we do provide students and not just basic passing out worksheets to keep, to buy time. It must be really back to that alignment, back to what we're expecting students to know at the end of the year in order to be successful. Differentiation. We have a question on our walkthrough about differentiation, and it looks so different. It could be through the product, the actual product that the student is working on, the process, their process, some students may do a process just a little bit different than some others. And also the environment. Some students may be sitting off to the side or working in a small group. So we look at, look for ways to best meet the needs of our students so we can help push them to the next level. And then that classroom culture is one of the last pieces that we do look for. So what's actually happening? How does that classroom feel when you walk in the inside? Is it a good? So, what's actually happening? How does that classroom feel when you walk in the inside? Is it a good place for teaching and learning? All right, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Whitaker to provide a little bit more about this next step. So, how do we use that data?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, when we go into the classrooms and then we gather the learning walk data, we use the data to make data-driven decisions so that we can provide support to our teachers and our principals in what, what their needs are. So, we're looking at data. We're trying to see what can we do to support instruction in the schools. And so, we also pull that data and talk about PD. What PD do we need to offer our principals? What PD do we need to offer our teachers? So that we are maximizing capacity and instruction. We identify areas of needs, and this has been going well as we've been going into the schools and doing our learning walks. We've been having conversations with principals about what they feel their needs are, and the data supports that. And so, now, again, we take that data to provide PD, have PLCs and things such as that, to help them improve instruction in their buildings. We also use the data to identify trends and relationships with student outcomes. We've just really started our walkthroughs back mid-September using that actual tool. And so, we're gathering that data now, and hopefully, we'll be able to, within the next round of our learning walks, to see what some of the trends are and what we need to address. And we also use our learning walks for target coaching for educators. Next slide, please. So, here's a sample of what we look for in our learning walks. And so, the rubric we use, we look for, and we score on very evident, evident, somewhat evident, and not evident. And so, just took some learning walks that I did at one particular school, and on that particular day, I only did four learning walks. But it shows you basically what I saw when I went into the school. And so, what I look for, the learning outcomes are clearly described and communicated, and it shows that three of the four had that, so that was very evident. And so, then you can look and see at, on the side, those are the things that we look for. And then we get data to show us whether or not most of the teachers were evident, very evident, somewhat evident, and not evident. And again, we take this data and have conversations with principals. As a matter of fact, we will have our first data dive with principals at our principal meeting this Wednesday when we take a look at the data that we've gathered so far and just dive into and break down and see what our needs are instructionally. Next slide, please. So, so far, we, we're excited because at this point in the year, we've done 219. Well, it was 219 as of September 26th, so we've done more now. But one of the things that we're constantly communicating to teachers and principals this year is, you know, it's not necessarily about the number. We do want to do learning walks, but what, where the impact is going to come in is the feedback that we're given. And so, we're making sure that we're giving intentional feedback to principals and teachers as we go in and see learning walks. And principals are given intentional feedback to teachers. And again, we're going to dive a little deeper into how that should look in our principal's meeting this Wednesday. Next slide, please. So, this slide here shows, this was our district schedule. This is how we went into the schools. This was our first round of learning walks. And so, we had two teams. We divided the district director's team up, Team A and Team B. And so, we deployed into the schools based on the schools that were assigned to us on these particular days, and we did our learning walks. And again, we will come together on Wednesday and go through what, what are some of the trends we saw? What are some of the relationships, and how do we now move forward based on what we've seen? Next slide, please. Okay, you're welcome.
I do want to add that these learning walks are non-evaluative, so we're not going in to evaluate classroom teachers. That is responsibility of the principal. We're just going in providing, collecting data and using that data to drive our instructional decisions. So, we're going to turn our attention to academic attendance and behavior. So, one of the first pieces of data that we do have thus far is the BOG three, which is the beginning of third grade reading assessment for third grade students. And I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Whitaker to provide more information about the BOG three.
So, again, the BOG is the beginning of third grade assessment. And basically, what the BOG is, it is sort of like a diagnostic assessment. And all of our second grade students take this assessment coming into third grade, and we have to give it within the first 15 days of the school year. And so, this data is very important because it is linked to the Read to Achieve program. And we know that legislation with Read to Achieve, we want to make sure that students are grade-level proficient in literacy by the end of third grade. Next slide, please. So, if you take a look at the chart that we have here, it just shows you by school the number of students who were tested, the number of students who met college and career readiness. And what we mean by college and career readiness is they scored a level four or five on the assessment. And then it shows you the percent of students who are college and career-ready. And then we have students, the number of students who are grade-level proficient, and the percent of students who are grade-level proficient. So, the goal is by the end of the year, we want to make sure that all students are at least grade-level proficient. And that means that they're scoring, scoring a level three, four, or five on the EOG. So, the BOG is the beginning, and we need to keep in mind that the beginning, the BOG tests, these are students going into third grade. They have not been taught the standards yet. At the end of the year, when they take the EOG, they would have been taught the standards. And so, that's why, you know, we look at the number of students who aren't proficient now, but after being taught the standards within the year, you know, those, those numbers will definitely increase. Next slide, please. Yes, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. So, I just want to make sure that I understand because it's slightly misleading the way this is worded. Number met career and college readiness standards. You're saying basically that kids who are in third grade are meeting the trajectory to be college and career-ready by the time they graduate, or?
So, no, I'm so sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, so, the way the EOGs and EOCs are set up, you have, if students make a level four or five, that means that they have hit career and college standards, which they're a little bit surpassing grade-level standards. And then if they're three, four, and five, they've met grade-level proficiency. So, where we see, for example, the first school, of those students, we have two students who are already on levels four and five. That means that they're already proficient, okay? And that's what we want. We want to get as many as we can at four and five, but definitely, we want everyone to be at least grade-level proficient by the end of the year.
If I may, those, those two terms are the ones that the state provides.
Yes.
Yeah, they're just really weird terms.
Yeah.
Used for third graders.
A parent gets that child's in third grade. I mean, how much they think their child's doing pretty well, they're just not quite at grade level yet, they're doing pretty well, making good grades, and they get that, and they say, "Oh, my goodness, my child can't go to college." I'm not saying they're going to say that, but I mean, how do we communicate that in such a way that we don't upset parents? When, you know, it's pretty young to make that kind of assumption, in my opinion. I know it's a state thing, but still.
So, one of the things that we get from the state, which is really good, is each student gets to take home a student, it's a student report that we can generate, that the state provides for us, and it clearly defines what college and career readiness means and what grade-level proficient means. So, that's, parents can understand, you know, if my child has met the grade-level proficiency, then my child, you know, we're, the, the student is on the right path for moving forward. So, it doesn't mean that if they don't hit college and career readiness, they're not necessarily ready for college or won't be ready for college.
So, sorry, this is like, because my son's going through this right, like, right now. So, um, the one thing that like I know that I've received at his school is like, because he wasn't career and college, whatever this thing says. But like, there are 11 different times that you can test throughout the year. Is that?
Yes, thank you.
And so, like, a parent gets like the chart home and says like, "Okay, this time they reached, you know, a nine, and we were hoping for an 11", or whatever, yeah.
Thank you. That, that's for, for bringing it out. So, yes. So, with the RTA, Read to Achieve legislation, students do get ample opportunities throughout the school year to show proficiency. So, we start with the BOG, and mainly, we're talking about, um... So, we start with the BOG, and we're talking about not just our third grade students here, but we're also talking about some of our students who are in three, four transition classes. So, they can show proficiency several ways. They can show it with the BOG, which is the beginning of the year assessment. They can show it, now, we, we used to be able to use I-Ready as one of the ways in which students can show proficiency. However, the state has to approve any other outside vendor, and as of last year, the state had not approved those. So, we're waiting to see whether or not we can use I-Ready as one of those methods. We can use DIBELS M-Class, which is a state, a state assessment that we give. We can use a reading portfolio, which is a portfolio that's given to us by the state. In October, there's another administration of the RTA assessment for students who may not have passed it at the end of third grade but are in a third, third slash fourth grade transition class. So, they get an opportunity to take the RTA assessment in October. Then, as we move to the end of the year, students have the opportunity to take, to take the EOG. And if they do not fare well on the EOG, they can take the Read to Achieve assessment in June before we end the school year. And then, if we have students who are still struggling, who have not shown proficiency, we offer reading camp in the summer. And then they can come back and take the RE, um, RTA assessment again at the end of the summer. So, there are ample opportunities throughout the school year for students to show proficiency in literacy by the end of third grade.
And so, it's my understanding that like if a child completes like a portfolio and achieves whatever standard is designated that they need to achieve to show proficiency, they still participate in the EOG? Or they, but like, they're still, how does that work?
Well, all students, if they pass the portfolio, they will get the RTA, well, the designation of RTA. They, they're shown, they've shown proficiency in literacy, but all students are still, are required to take the EOG at the end of the year. Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, am I correct to see that West Oxford had one student out of 59 that was on?
They have one student out of, out of 59 who made a level four or five on the assessment. And they had one student out of the 59 who made a level three, four, or five. So, I, I think the best way to, to think about this is at the end of the year, we want as many students as possible to be level three, four, or five. That's what we want. And so, keeping in mind also that the students who took this test, I think it was maybe September 11th, because again, we have to give it within the first few days of the school year. We, our third grade teachers had not taught these standards yet. This is sort of a diagnostic. They will teach these standards as students are going through the school year. So, these numbers will definitely increase.
And, sorry, so this is another question that I had. This was actually brought up at my son's school, which was kind of funny because like they had this whole like, you know, welcome back to school, blah, 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 whatever. And you got kind of to go through a day in the life of your child and go to their different classrooms, which was neat. And then, of course, me being like, you know, super proud parent, I was like, "I don't need to pay attention to this kind of stuff", and now, all of a sudden, I do, you know? But they, they did sit all the third grade parents down and explain basically exactly as you're explaining, you know?
Yes.
Who knows who actually retained all the information. Clearly, I didn't. So, um, but I guess, um, I think the other thing that's, that's difficult as a parent is whenever you're sitting and reading with your child and you're, you know, they're reading so well, but like also not understanding, like, okay, if they're not, not that you want to, because I understand not wanting to teach to the test so that they pass the test, but understanding exactly what the different parameters are that they're looking at in this test so that you're not just going, "Well, my kid can read a chapter book from start to finish and have no issue, and they retain the information", but what is it that the test is asking that they may not be able to, so that the parent can help with that at home as well?
Mm-hmm. So, just to make sure I'm hearing you clearly, you're asking that we communicate or maybe have a session where we're communicating, just breaking all of this down to parents?
Yes.
Okay.
Just, yeah, because I think it's really helpful to understand. I mean, you can look at like BOG and EOGs, and then you're like, "Oh, my God, like, my kid, my kid's got this", right? But then, like, not understanding that there are so many different times that they can still access. You know what I mean? Like, have, it's, when you look at the BOG and the EOG and not realizing that there are so many other benchmarks that they have throughout the school year to hit whatever it is that they need to hit.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Like, that's just really helpful to know that you have that. But then also, um, if there's a, like, if there were some kind of way that the parents can be notified of like, you know, your kid reads phonetically, grammatically, whatever, well, but like, this is the area that we're realizing that maybe if you can, when you read with them, ask them more questions or whatever. I don't know. It's just a thought.
Dr. Whitaker, if I'm correct.
Can I, can I respond to that?
For your, your question.
Yeah.
So, we do have diagnostic assessments as well throughout the course of the year, so that's when we use the I-Ready.
Okay.
That's when we use the check-ins to find out which standards the students are actually struggling with.
Okay.
And then they work with their teachers on a day-to-day basis. The teachers start identifying where the, where the, where the gaps are in the learning.
Yeah.
So, additional assignments and assessments can be used to measure that, to help close those gaps and move those students forward.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. And what I was going to say is that we do send communications home to parents. Once we get our BOG information back, students do take a BOG letter home to sort of inform parents of where they are. And then, as Mr. Perry said, right now, we're doing our BOY, I mean, yes, beginning of the year diagnostics. And so, we're communicating with parents also, you know? They're having issues in phonemic awareness or comprehension, so those letters and those things are going out. But I do understand and appreciate what you said, maybe just having sessions where we can just talk parents through it so that they can get a better understanding.
It's just so much information, and it's, it's just sometimes it's a little hard with the wording that they use from the state and everything else, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, one observation at West Oxford here, that number one kid here, I think I do recall their scores from last year. I think they need some help there. They may need some extra help there at West Oxford.
Yes.
I think their scores were pretty low last year. And right now, those same second rates may have been the same pool being tested this year from last year. I'm just thinking the same cohort that may be going forward.
Yeah, the cohort moving up.
So, I think they're going to need a lot of help. I think at that school, they should get that score move in the right direction.
Okay, thank you.
How long is that test in reading EOG in third grade? How long do those children sit there?
I, I don't remember or recall exactly, Ms. Williams, but I can get that information to you. I know that if I'm not mistaken, from when I worked in testing, I think the maximum time that students have may be about three hours. But all of the students don't use that much, you know, that much time, so.
I was proctoring in fifth grade, and it was a long three hours.
Yes, ma'am.
And you're right. Most of them finished maybe 20 or 30 minutes before it was up.
It was still a long time for children to sit still, especially third graders.
Yeah, it is a long time, but we do try to encourage students to use their time wisely. We don't want them to rush through the assessment, and we do understand, especially with the reading test, there can be some fatigue, just reading fatigue. And so, one of the things that teachers really try to work to do throughout the year is build the students' endurance. They give them practice passages and things like that, and longer passages so that they're used to sitting and reading so that they won't be so fatigued on the day of the test, and they are not just going through, just clicking or bubbling anything because they're tired. So, thank you. Any more questions?
Dr. Whitaker, if I may, just interrupt briefly.
Yes.
Thank you so much for this. I would like to clarify for just everyone that's listening too, to make sure that we're, we're very clear about this. This bottom line, this yellow line for the district data, of the 456 third graders in our school district at the beginning of the year assessment, 47 have already been deemed proficient
That is correct.
in the third grade standards.
That is correct.
Before they've even been taught them.
Mm-hmm.
So, I just think that's important to make sure we say that because that 10% is very alarming. It's still quite low, but it does not mean that only 10% of our students in the third grade can read.
Thank you.
That's not what that is saying.
That's right. That's a great point. That's a great point. Yep.
Do, um, do you have any, and I understand that we're trying to focus forward, but I think it's always important to learn from, from things in the past. Do you have any idea how this year's numbers would compare to the past two years?
I don't have it tonight, but I can definitely get it.
I mean, because the way that I'm kind of looking at this graph and interpreting it and, you know, taking into account what Dr. Winborn just said, it's more of kind of a, it's more of a kind of a look at how our, our students have, have done thus far up to second grade, right? Because it's kind of showing, well, these are the ones that have done super well and have like, a lot of mastery skills and are actually a little bit ahead. And then, these are the ones that have not yet, you know, moved into the third grade proficiency, you know? And then, these are the ones that might need a little bit more help. And so, that's, I mean, I'm trying to kind of look at it in that perspective.
Right.
Um, you know, seeing that it's the beginning of the year. They literally haven't been taught these things yet.
Exactly.
So, I mean, you know, so I, I do understand that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but also thinking about last year's proficiency rates and the twenty-one, twenty-two proficiency rates.
Now, can I ask a question for clarity? When you say proficiency rates, are you talking about, um, the proficiency rates on the BAWG?
No, 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 like, at the end of the year, like, the ones we were presenting from NCDPI and all of that. So, um, my concern is that we continue to do these walkthroughs. And, I mean, seven thousand is like a lot. That's a lot in two years. Seventy-two hundred-ish, if, if my math in my head was, was okay. Um, and it's, it's not working.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, and I'm not saying people aren't working hard, so please do not misunderstand that. Um, you know, obviously, our teachers are working very hard. Our students are showing up and working very hard. I just don't know why it's not translating into our proficiency rates at this point. And it concerns me, because that's literally our job, is to educate children. And if we're not doing that, what are we doing?
A lot of that has to do with us focusing our attention and actually removing extraneous things from habit, off teachers' plates, particularly this year, because we're looking at focusing forward. And in order to do that, we want to make sure that teachers have what they need and they're teaching the core curriculum. And that's what, that's what we're, we're trying to push this year, that teachers are teaching to the, teaching the core daily, on a daily basis, and utilizing the time that they have with students. You know, removing all those extraneous things that we talked about, you know, and making sure that the focus is on students, grouping students accordingly in order to provide opportunities to close gaps. Uh, we're using our resources wisely. We, you know, we, we've had conversations before. Um, and, you know, some of the things that we've instituted this year, of course, is with, um, actually, just not just presenting data, but using this data effectively. How do we use what we have in order to move the, move the academic needle? That's important, because, you know, it's, it's, it is embarrassing, or it is dismal when you see those numbers. No, 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 and we're not placing blame on anyone, but we don't, we want to make sure that these kids are prepared for the future. At some point, they're going to be caring for us. They're going to be our leaders. And we want to make sure they have a sound, basic education. And that starts now. But we know we have to focus forward with the things that we need to do. And we just can't, you're right. We can't keep doing the same things that we've always been doing. But we also want to make sure we focus on the main thing. And that is academics, with making sure kids are here every day with attendance and behaving. Because when those two things come together, we can start moving the needle forward. Also, this year, we have more teachers. We have more teachers than we had last year. Uh, so there are some gaps that'll be closed there, but just having a certified teacher in that classroom each day. So, that's important. So, some of the things that we will kind of, kind of push to the side now, um, is just kind of focusing forward and move that trajectory. So, uh, we do have, our, our principals are working on their school improvement plans with their school improvement teams. Uh, you'll hear that in two weeks. They're working very hard to make sure that they are meeting the needs of students at their particular schools. And we're going to be there to support them. So, we ask that you guys continue to support us, as you already have. Push us, push us. I mean, we're all, we're going to all rise to high expectations.
Mr. Perry, what this data doesn't really show, and it may not be a way to really do it, but where, where we have the kids that are not scoring as high, how far behind are they? Or do we have some that are kind of on the cusp of getting there? Just a little below?
So, we'll start to look at our I-Ready data that's beginning to come in, because that window actually closed on Friday for I-Ready, uh, which is grades K through eight in reading and math. And we can start looking at how many students are maybe one grade level behind or two or more grade level behind, and those who may be above one, a grade level ahead. Uh, now, we begin to disaggregate that data with the principals and then actually start, as I mentioned, the system will actually group students based on the, the standards that they need to master.
Thank you.
You raised a point earlier about students, these forty-seven. So, this is a good opportunity to look at our AIG services. What kind of services are they, are these students possibly eligible for? Are they, uh, Ms. Bishop has done a great job with improving, um, the services that we've been doing for our elementary students and actually bringing that down to the second grade, um, in the lower grades, and actually helping to, uh, push those students and making sure that their needs are being met. Because oftentimes, uh, focus has always been on those students who have not met, uh, uh, the performance measures that we've set. And, well, excuse me, we've oftentimes focused on those students who have not met the standard and not those students who are above average. And we need to focus on them, because that's a population that deserves our attention as well.
Well, and I have total confidence with all the changes that we've made recently, that that's going to start moving the needle. I mean, attendance, I mean, the code of conduct, that's, that's awesome. I'm happy that it's going, I mean, I'm, I'm, I know it's going to move in the right direction. Um, out of general curiosity, because I would like to think that our goal would not be a hundred percent of kids entering third grade are, are starting at the goal where they already know third grade reading, right? So, ten percent, I hear everybody, is a starting point. It's how we're measuring how the curriculum is going this year, right? Like, what would be a number up there that you guys would be happy with? Is twenty percent going into third year a good reflection of how things went through second grade? I mean, is it fifty percent? I mean, that, that, I mean, that context, I think, is super important.
I mean, it would be great if we had a lot of those students who were already on grade level, um, well, actually, excuse me, on third grade level at the end of second grade, because we know we can push those kids even further. Um, so I hate to quantify, but so I would say a hundred percent, actually. I mean, I know that's unrealistic, but you asked me my opinion on that. That's certainly what I wanted to be.
So, um, you talked about removing, um, like distractions from the classroom. Uh, is there any discussion going on about removing, um, technology or laptops from K through two?
Not yet, but I'm curious to learn more about that.
I think I just started it.
Yes, you did.
Okay.
Thank you.
Also, one other thing. Um, so, I would really like for our teachers to have unlimited copy.
Unlimited?
Copy.
Copy, okay.
Um, yeah, so, uh, a lot of our students are using, um, their laptops a lot. And, um, the things that I'm seeing, uh, from, you know, some of, some of my kids' friends, their, their, my kids themselves, is that they rely on this entirely too much. The more we can put pencil to paper, especially in those lower grades, I...
Go right ahead.
I'm just, I mean, I'm just going to say it, like, I've had teachers say, why do we not have unlimited copy? Like, why? I, I mean, if we're going to give teachers the resources that they need to be successful, it seems like the simplest answer. Make all the, make all of the copies that you need for all of the, all of the handouts, all of the worksheets. Can we please allow them to make worksheets, especially for math? Like, put their little pencils on the paper, all they need to. I mean, there, I see no reason to restrict that kind of thing right now.
And that's an excellent observation. And I will note that when we actually went into some of those learning walks, we did see kids who are using that, uh, core curriculum, because a lot of those, particularly in the lower grades, they come with, uh, consumable materials,
The workbooks.
Which are workbooks.
Right.
We have plenty of workbooks.
Which is fantastic.
Plenty of workbooks. And we rather, uh, you know, some of us rather, we were at pretty old school. I don't want to date myself too much. Uh, very familiar with using those workbooks in, in their primary grades to, because there is a connection between the research, between writing and, and brain work, so.
And then, I also think about things like the arts. Um, they need copy for, um, band sheet music, for choral sheet music, you know, all of that as well. And I hate to have to restrict that and...
I will say, though, we, we do need to be slightly careful, though, on, on sheet music. And I only say that is because, um, copyrighting
Oh, yeah.
With, so, yeah, so choral directors and band directors, I mean, like, they know. Um, but, yeah, I don't, I just don't...
Worksheets too. I mean, those, all of those things have copyrights.
But like, I'm just saying, like, if you're going to start, like, making copies of all the music, just be careful.
I would certainly concur with Ms. Hayes. I want more paper pencil things for the younger kids. I think it's something about holding that pencil and writing that number and doing that puts it in the brain a little bit better than clicking something on a computer.
Yeah, I agree.
It's just concrete. If you go back to P R J's theory, we need more concrete for our younger children.
Do you need to make it official? Unlimited copy?
We received your message loud and clear.
If, I mean, if there's any, you know, objections, feel free to speak now.
Bring that to the academic committee.
I will donate my, I will donate a ring.
I will too. You need a box?
I will three.
Excellent, okay.
Question?
I mean, I was just going to ask. I mean, I, I loved what Ms. Hayes said about the technology in kiddos. I mean, I got kids, and we try to restrict technology, and I can't imagine what they would do on a computer like, all day for learning's sake. I mean, that would just be tough. I mean, is that something, would addressing, uh, the young, the elementary access to, to computers, would that have to go through the policy committee? Or what would, what would that have to look like?
I think it'd be most appropriate to start that discussion in the academic committee. I would like to see us gather some information about this. When I go into the kindergarten, first, second grade classrooms, I don't see a terrible amount of individual technology used by students. I see smart boards being used, and I see some, some work on I-Ready kind of as a station. But I don't see a lot of direct instruction involving technology. But I think we need to gather that information so that we can, um, address it.
Certainly.
And, I mean, yeah, and correct me if I'm wrong. This is, um, something that some of the area charter schools adopt, is that they have no technology in K through two, um, because it has shown that it, you know, interferes with children's ability to form those, um, motor function skills, you know, and form that really strong foundation. Um, so, I would really love to see us examine that and have that discussion.
All right. So, we'll keep moving forward. Uh, next up is actually attendance. So, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Norfleet for both attendance and behavior.
Good evening. Uh, we've started the conversation already about attendance, um, with that being one of Dr. Winborn's main focuses. Um, for this school year, we've looked at, what is it that we can do, um, to strengthen student attendance? Because we know that if they're here, then the likelihood of our proficiency rising is greater. So, um, in addition to our district attendance committee, um, one of the things that we've really focused on in this committee is looking at attendance incentives and consequences. Um, and so, with the implementation of our new attendance procedures, um, to incentivize attendance, schools are sharing messages with students and parents about the importance of attendance and how it connects to student performance. This week, um, as a district support, we will be recognizing schools at our principals' meeting, um, at each level with the highest attendance rate. And beginning next month, we will recognize both schools with the highest attendance rates as well as the most improved attendance rate. So, what we've done is we've taken kind of like our preliminary principals' monthly report, sometimes you'll hear us refer to it as our PMR, and looked at across the district for each level, um, what our attendance rate looks like. And so, you can see, um, we're, our, our elementary is ninety-five, middle ninety-three, high ninety-two. And as a district, we're sitting at ninety-four percent for our attendance rate. Our district goal is ninety-six point five percent. So, we're not quite there. But I think, um, again, with the work that we're doing with, um, our district attendance committee and, and putting those incentives and, as well as consequences in place, um, for students, we're beginning to see that change. If you have an opportunity, if you haven't already done so, when you're walking around to some of our schools,[1436.62] some of them are doing a great job already. They're having attendance boards up. They're having internal competitions. So we're excited at our principals', for our principals' meeting this coming Wednesday to announce to our principals at each level again, who has the highest attendance percentage? Because we know everybody likes a good competition, so we're excited about that.
Can I, can I ask, sorry?
Yes.
Um, so I know that in the past that we, we weren't differentiating between excused and unexcused. So is this all absences?
Yes, this is all absences, but great point because when we're talking about our excused and unexcused, when we're talking about those incentives and conse- specifically consequences, we're looking at unexcused absences. So thank you for bringing that.
Okay, so the 92% for high school reflects all excused and unexcused.
That is correct.
Is that what it is right now?
This was as of the 27th.
Do you know how that compared to last year this same time?
I don't, but I can find that information out for you.
Be real interesting to see.
I do know that for the year, our district's attendance rate was 86.5%.
Already, already.
Okay. Next slide, please. And again, behavior, another focus of Dr. Winborn. What we wanted to do is emphasize again, that's already been stated tonight, with the reinforcement of our conduct code and holding students accountable for their actions. We're looking at a comparison here of our data of September 2022 to September 2023 as of the 27th of September. And we see a small decrease, but we're hoping that, you know, this push that we have, this is just a snapshot of our office referrals and suspensions that we have as of September 27th. Majority, when we look at those office referrals, most of those would be categorized as disruptive behavior. And that's gonna look different at each level. One of the things that we did have brief conversations with our principals at our last principals' meeting was having discussions with staff members in regards to how do we define certain behaviors? Because we want to make sure that the data that we are collecting, it's, you know, it has fidelity and that we are putting measures in place that are going to address the targeted behavior of whatever that may look like, whether it's disruptive behavior, whether it's skipping class, that sort of thing. So I'm not gonna read this over all the way through for you, but you can see where we have a slight decrease. And again, this is gonna be one of our pushes that we're really looking to hold students accountable that will also, you know, allow for us to decrease those areas of disruption that are gonna interrupt instruction. Any questions?
Always. Sorry. So the middle school, which obviously was higher than the other two, do you have any idea, have many of those been a reflection of our change in cell phone policy or has that been?
Great question. Yes, yes, yes. And I'm sorry I didn't mention that earlier, where we have kinda cracked the whip when it comes to our cell phone policies and, and students just getting adjusted to that. But for those of us that have had middle schoolers ourselves, we know that developmentally, middle school's tough, especially for those that are coming from fifth to sixth and learning the ropes of middle school and just kind of learning to readjust to the, the new way of school. But definitely, we've seen the impact of our, our new cell phone policy, yes.
And, you know, that's, that's always, you know, just thinking back at, at my own kids, you know, that's tends to be the age where they're really pushing those boundaries.
Absolutely.
And so like, I'm not, you know, I'm not surprised at all that that's actually higher than high school.
Yes.
Those darn kids. Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you.
I do wanna add that regarding behavior, we do have a training coming up with, from the NCDPI regarding positive behavior intervention support with all of our schools. We will have small teams selected from each school to come out to be trained on how to effectively implement the PBIS system. So we're looking forward to that in two weeks. All right, thank you.
Dr. Whitaker and Dr. Norfleet, thank you very much for your presentation. Hi, Mr. Perry. I look forward to each of our academic updates having specific data points for you guys to review, probe, ask questions about, so that you can be a part of this, you know, discussion at the, at the level where it happens.
That's exactly right, where the rubber meets the road, so to speak. Okay, our next item on the agenda is under this call, responsibility. Ms., Ms. Hines?
Good evening, board members. We are starting our meeting with our lovely report on the use of our S R, our COVID funds. You will see the standard report of our expenditures. Again, this is through August 31st. In those highlighted areas, I am pleased to report as of Friday afternoon, all of those balances are zero. So we have fully spent our S R dollars for this, for this go around. So they, the, the teams have worked incredibly hard to make that happen. So kudos to them for, for doing that. You can see that we still have minus the, the S R $2, we have approximately $8 million remaining in, in our S R funds for, for, for the remainder of this school year, really, through September 30th. The remaining funds expire this time next year, September 30th. I see a question.
So could you, so I was looking over this and having a little bit of a heart attack that they weren't at zero. So I'm glad that you addressed that. Thank you. So what can you tell me about like, so the code like 185 where we had the, the larger amount of money sitting? Could you tell us anything about like where we were able to put those resources?
Oh, absolutely. It's, it's been fascinating.
Cause I don't know what any of these codes mean.
Absolutely. 185 is specifically designed to, that, that one is specifically designed to support E C. And, and truly, the, the issues that they had in spending the money is that they have been so understaffed that they've had other federal dollars that they also had to expend before they expired. So they have been, they have been working double time to make sure that happens. But honestly, the resources that I have seen come through for our perpetually underfunded area, it's really exciting. And, and I think part of the, part of the difficulty is convincing folks that it's okay to spend some money. Because we are, as, as educators, we are so used to those tight budgets. It's very difficult sometimes to spend money. So, but by golly, have they done it. All right, any other questions about the, 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 excuse me, the, if you just scroll through, the remaining, the remaining report is the standard report from the state sharing how our expenses have been, have been used through, through time. Any questions, other questions about our COVID funds?
I was looking at, one of the items was an E C grant, I mean, early childhood grant. I'm trying to find it now, so I'll try to do it.
That was probably 186, the IDEA preschool grant. That went right along with E C. That's specifically focused on E C pre-K.
Is that zeroed out now?
Yes, yes. All, all of the expiring funds are zeroed out. Maybe even a little overspent, but we're gonna fix that. Okay, thank you very much. Yes, this is again, the, the standard report that we have. I think, I think we're good to, to move on from this report. The, and, and finally, as, as it has been, about approximately 76% of our expenses in these COVID funds have been to salaries and benefits. Thank you, we can move on. It's a very exciting report. I know you are enjoying seeing that.
I think we're ready for the next thing, the budget update.
Budget update. Okay, 602 budget update. You get that one too?
Absolutely. So we have, it's, it's been a little busy the last time, since the last time we spoke and even since the last time we spoke with the finance committee. Wanted to hit the budget highlights with you all. You've probably heard this over and over at this point. Starting with personnel changes, salary increases for teachers, instructional support and assistant principals, 2 to 7.7% increase for other state employees, basically all other employees, there's a 4% increase except for our bus drivers who get an additional 2%. So they'll be getting a 6% increase in, in their pay rate this year. Allotments, most, again, most of the formulas are pretty consistent with, with last year, that the ones that are ADM based, you know, so the changes will come with our own membership numbers that come in. Excited about some specific allotments that we have, those school psychologist positions that for the last two years, we have not been able to use those funds. They have opened up that funding to include social workers, nurses and counseling. So it's, it's expanded to school health support, which is terrific. It looks like we are also expecting an increase in our instructional supply funds, which is great, and driver's ed education as well. I am a little concerned about the numbers. I haven't seen the numbers yet. So what we are getting a decrease in our at-risk funding. That's a, a big pot that, that we count on. So we're waiting to see what those numbers look like. Those funds are moving to support the Extended Learning and Integrated Student Supports competitive grant. So use of fund balance, again, if, finance committee, you've been taking a look at this. You all have seen this, this report many times. I'm just, again, trying to keep this in your, in your mindset of, of what we have. We're, we started the year based on last year's audit with 8.8 million fund balance. A little bit of an update since, since this report came out, I, I was projecting about 818,000 use of fund balance. We are actually closer to a million as, as we're kind of working through audit and, and looking at our liabilities. We're, we're hitting closer to a million in fund use. On the, on the, going in the other direction, our relocation and renovation costs are, are not going to hit 500,000. So it, it looks like we're gonna be closer to the 300,000 range in that area, so that kinda balances out a, a bit. We're looking to still, what we had proved before, the 471,000 for decompression. This is that second year of our decompression agreement with the county and our recruitment and retention efforts, approximately, just under a million dollars. I do have in here that there is a potential usage of fund balance to cover some of our international teacher fees. Will, as we're working on budget, we'll, we'll look to see if that's necessary. Anticipating the, the end of this school year with a fund balance of just under 6 million, which is 7.6% of our 2223 budgets, which is still an acceptable amount for, for fund balance. Next slide, please. I apologize for the placement of this slide. I'm sorry, does someone have a question?
I was just gonna ask on that decompression, is that, I mean, the last year, we'll have that coming out?
Yes, that's correct. This slide is a, as I, as I looked back at this presentation, this slide is a little misplaced, so I apologize for it being in the middle here. However, I just wanted to make sure everyone on the board was aware that last year, we discussed the moving our 10-month classified employees from a salary to a, an hourly pay scale. And we decided that back in the spring, but we decided that, oh, our employees needed much more time to prepare for that. So we have started the conversations right before school started. We've gone out and met with all the affected school staff and child nutrition staff, teacher assistants, custodians, office staff, child nutrition employees. We'll be going, beginning with the next school year, they'll be moving from the August to May pay schedule where they're paid in advance on a salary basis to a September to June payroll calendar where they're paid after the hours worked. The reason we're bringing this up is because it's, it's a concern that it's, they need to prepare for this coming summer, the summer of '24, because they're transitioning from one payroll schedule to another, they'll have three months, instead of their normal two months unpaid, they'll have three months unpaid. And we respect that. People need time to plan for that. So we, again, have met with our staff and are continuing to answer questions in our Friday morning memos. Does anybody have questions about that? Okay, next slide, please. And back to our budget discussion. Just wanted to share with you the timeline, my predicted timeline. Obviously, first of all, one of the components of the budget is of course salary increases. And because we have that information now and assuming that we get all of the information we need and, and it looks like the budget has become law as of today, because today was the end of the 10, 10-day period. Pending that, that law and our salary scale approval, we would like to update our salaries in October payroll. We believe we can make that happen in October for our staff. D P I is currently calculating the allotments. They officially have 10 days, 10 business days from the date that the budget becomes law to get those allotments out to us. I know that they started working on them as soon as the, the budget was passed. So hopefully, we'll get them before that, that time. And as Ms. Williams said during her comments, the goal is the December board meeting to have the budget available to you. I anticipate we should have the allotments in the next 10 days, so we should definitely be able to have that by the December meeting. Do you all have any other, any other questions?
Small question, but with the updated payroll percentages, is that gonna go out of the fund balance? Or would that be an updated payroll line item in the balance sheets from before?
That was actually part of our, our budget requ- our budget proposal last year. We anticipated, I think, I think I anticipated a 3% increase. So, you know, we're, we're close, but most of the, all of the, the position allotments we have, that's all going to, to be naturally taken care of. It's just those dollar allotments that are affected by those increases.
And that, I'm sorry, the 7.7% increase, is that over two years?
No, actually, the, it's my understa- it's my understanding, and I hope I didn't pull that number incorrectly. It just depends on where the, the person is in the, in the scale, how much, what that percentage is. Because there are, the, the lower level teachers, the, the newer teachers get the, the larger increase than the, than the higher teachers. But it's my understanding that some did get a 7.7. I will, I'll look at that again just to make sure I didn't get that.
I read that, that I was thinking that there was a, a certain percentage this first year and then another percent.
And that's accurate. That is absolutely accurate.
Oh.
But no, that's 7.7 and then an additional amount.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. So the next item we have is we'd like to present to you our updated local classified salary scales. Again, this is based on the, the increases that were permitted within the state budget. Now, we're presenting this to you for your approval with the assumption that the budget has been made law at that point. I do want to note, the, these few notes, that these scales will be effective retroactively to July 1, and they do reflect the state mandated 4% increase. And of course, the 6% increase for bus drivers. Now, we did the hard work on the, on the pay scales last year where we made everything a step. So this is a very clear, just straight 4%. If you're on, on level zero right now and you're moving to level two, you're, you're going to be moving to a, with a 4% increase. Do you all have, and of course, here you have all of the, the, the basic salary scales. We also have a separate page for the child nutrition food assistance. They, they are on a, they're paid a little differently depending on the number of hours they work. Again, this is for this year, they're still on the salaried scale. So it's, it's broken down based on the number of hours they work per week. And the next page is the bus, the hourly bus driver scale. And again, that is including the 6% increase. And then we have basic hourly rates on the, for subs and community schools and Granville Online on the next page. The final page, I've promised our 10, 10-month, having gone and talked to the, to, to the folks at the schools, that our 10-month classified folks, I promised them that we would include the hourly rates because they're so used to salaried that they're just not used to, they're not used to looking at their hourly rate. But they need that for planning, so we told them that we would include that in the pay scales this year so they could just have it for their own reference. So I'm asking that you all approve this as, as presented based, you know, assuming that the state budget becomes law. Motion to approve the local classified salary scales as presented.
Second.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you so much, Ms. Hines.
Thank you all.
You always do a fabulous job. Our next item on the agenda is health and safety operations facilities. Dr. Hamm and Mr. Graham are gonna be presenting.
Dr. Hamm will present. No, we're happy to be here. Dr. Hamm is here to give you an update. You had asked for some information, so he's put together sort of a summary of where things stand with transportation and sort of the predicament that we have and things that we're doing to address that. So without further ado, I'll let Chris take over. So thank you all.
Good evening, everyone. Sorry, I didn't get the jeans memo, so it didn't join in. So yeah, I thought we'd start off with some positives till we, before we got to some more of the nitty gritty of the presentation this evening. So just kind of a year in review, last year, we transported over 3,000 students daily, an average of 5,500 miles per day for a year total approaching a million miles. And out of that, no major accidents, couple of offenders with some property damage. So I'm very proud of that, that statistic. When you include activity buses and field trips, and we're way past a million miles traveled last year. Right, next slide. A quick update on the clean bus updates, the initiatives there. So we were awarded two electric buses and one propane-powered bus last year. Everybody keeps asking me, when are we gonna get them buses? And I keep going, I don't know. Cause this is a very drawn-out process, you know, we all know how fast government works sometimes. I did get an update about three or four weeks ago that all contracts and POs were recently signed by D P I. Still no timeline for delivery, but at least finally, everything has been signed, so everything is, is on board with that. And we also recently applied for two additional electric buses as part of the next round of the EPA's Clean School Bus Program. And again, no timeline for any notification for awards there. This school year, we runs, we try to run 74 buses every day. Of those, we do have 14 designed double runs. So what happens in those situations, we'll take Butner, for example. Lot of kids live really close to the school and then we have kids who live kind of further out towards Providence and all that area. So the routes are designed to go and pick up kids quickly in town, near the school, pick up a full bus load, take them back, and then the bus runs out to farther areas to pick up other kids. So we have 14 designed double runs. We did have 15 last year, so we were one less than we were last year. We do have two current driver vacancies, both at South Granville and Holly. That was three, but we were able to work some magic after we found out who was riding and not riding to reduce that. Our substitute driver pool is extremely thin across the district and in many cases, it is non-existent. And we are approaching things like cold and flu season or if anybody were to get injured at work, there's not a solution for who's gonna drive that bus next. I'm driving a bus at Cradle on Thursday afternoon to help out, cause they are three drivers short Thursday afternoon. So we help out where we can. I thought it'd be important for you to understand the entire process from start to finish of how you get your bus license. So everybody starts off attending a three-day CDL class and they have to pass four separate tests. After that, you do have to go get your DOT physical and you do have to pass a drug screen. After that, you obtain your CDL permit and then you must hold that permit for 14 days before you can do behind-the-wheel training. So then you can attend and pass the four-day behind-the-wheel training. You return to DMV and obtain your license. So this whole process can take two to three months. It is not a fast process in some cases. I'm driving people for training this week that were in my July, July class. And we've already had another class since then in September. had another class since then in September. So it, it, and some other factors that we'll talk about, so, but it's not a quick process from going, I wanted to be a bus driver, to actually getting hired in some cases. Okay? So there are some challenges to obtaining that CDL. We do share our DOT instructor with Vance County Schools, so I can't get every week that he's available. I certainly try, and I try to dominate that schedule anytime I get a week. He tells me when he's available, I'm something, yep, book me, we'll find somebody to put in there. He also does get called to do trainings for commercial driving school and some other things. And basically, if we don't keep him busy between us and Vance County, the state will go, okay, if you don't need him, we're going to pull him to go to Johnston County or to Durham or wherever. So we do definitely try to keep his calendar full. So that means that behind the wheel sessions are sometimes limited. I have a backlog now, and I'm already booking into November for behind the wheel training already, so October is already booked. We do have some issues with non-Granville County Schools employees using our trainings and never driving the school bus for us. The class is free, it is a federal curriculum that covers things beyond a school bus, so we become the jumping off point for people going to drive dump trucks or going to commercial schools to get their Class A's and drive 18-wheelers. That's just the nature of the beast. We have been fairly successful here lately in getting non-employees to drive for us, but that still is a challenge. And our biggest challenge across the district are employee medical exemptions. So we do have in policy that all full-time classified employees hired after July one in 2011 are required to obtain their bus license. Our policy also allows for medical exemptions. In the majority of these cases, this is due to a failed DOT physical, which can occur for a number of different health reasons. There are campuses in our district that have exactly zero classified employees hired after July one, 2011, that have their bus licenses. In most cases, it's one or two max, except for a couple. Shout out to Stovall, they've done a wonderful job of manning their fleet, as well as West Oxford and a few other schools. Those are just two come to the top of my head, off the top of my head there. So that, that is an issue. In many cases, we are getting by thanks to employees who are not required to drive, who were hired after, I mean, before 2011, who still drive for us, or our non-employees who only drive for us, which is a lot of retirees and folks. We have folks who work a job and then they drive for us in the afternoon. So that, that is how we're getting by at this point. So the impact of these missing drivers, 14 designed double routes. If we had more drivers, we would get rid of those double routes. We do have those two driver vacancies. Again, we have no substitute pool. Schools call me routinely, do you have an extra driver? We're not storing one anywhere, just going, ooh, I'm going to keep this guy to the side here. It doesn't work, it doesn't work like that. And staff morale, I, I've talked to a lot of drivers who are at schools and say they don't have to drive, but they are still driving, and they, they feel this obligation, and they're working a 12, 13 hour a day, driving in the morning and driving in the afternoon and working an eight hour day, and they see other folks who came in after them who signed these agreements saying, yes, I can get a, a license, and then they don't. So we have, in a lot of cases, we have staff who have said, I don't have to drive, I'm not going to drive anymore, because I'm tired of being burdened to do this while other folks are getting away with it. So that is a real issue. And it puts things on folks who are doing what they're supposed to do. How do they see folks who are not doing what they're supposed to do for various reasons doing those types of things? If all of our employees who were required to drive actually drove, we would not have a driver shortage. And in most schools, those drivers would not have to drive every day. So that's just the cold reality of that. So, so those are the problems around that, so what are we doing to address that shortage? We've offered nine CDL classes since I took over this role. That's way more than in previous years. We do have the benefit of not, of only sharing our instructor with Vance County in the past, they had to share with Durham and other things, so availability wasn't as strong. We already have our next class scheduled on for October 23rd. It is already full. I have a waiting list for the next class that isn't even scheduled yet. We continue to advertise opportunities for training with our employees, as well as through flyers, social media, however we can get that information out. We've made driving available to certified staff as an extra duty, and we currently have three drivers that drive for us daily. We review ridership and we consolidate bus routes. That's how we did, we got rid of one route at Holly that was short of driver, just moving kids around. And we are putting some, together some plans for a new incentive-based bonus for our drivers. Our driver bonus has been the same since I came here in 2004, so I think there's some time, it's time to update those things. And we are exploring the concept of bus monitors on non-EC high need buses. Currently, monitors are only on EC buses as the EC department does pay for those. So we are looking at possibilities of a local option in certain cases. Any questions?
So my question is actually, you said that your upcoming classes, you have a waitlist. Is there any way to know whether the people that are going to be attending that class intend on driving for GCPS?
Absolutely not. Outside of the, outside of the four or five employees?
And there's no way of like?
No.
Saying like, hey, you get priority in this class if you're planning on?
Well, I will tell you, my, my first priority will people, be people who already work for us.
Okay. Yeah, I remember seeing something on WRL about that.
It's not, that's not isolated.
Not for us, but for like Wake County.
Well, it's, it's definitely not a situation that's isolated to us, and it's actually gotten a little worse for us. There used to be a driving school here in Oxford that is no longer in operation.
Dr. Hamm, looking ahead, with the bus drivers we do have that are regular, that are employees in our schools and so forth, do you anticipate that due to the, some of them being older, that we may see less available drivers in the next four or five years?
That is a huge concern, especially in our non-employee drivers, quite frankly. If you look at our, our retirees or folks doing this just to, to do it, we have drivers, it just is what it is, we have drivers in their 70s continuing to drive. So that is, that is a huge concern, yes.
So I hope everybody took the time to look over the minutes from the meetings, because we spent a lot of time talking about this. And I would, I would be interested to see if there was any way to change our policy around the contracts that are signed and what the implications from that would be so that we could maybe give it a little bit more teeth. I mean, I, I get it, some people really do have valid reasons for exemptions, and that's, you know, totally understandable, but I've also heard the rumblings that there are people that are completely capable of driving a bus, and they just don't want to, and they sign these contracts without ever having the intention of, of following through, and so.
So certainly, if you're, which I think you do, but if the job is advertised as a dual position that requires driving and someone accepts that job, you can require them to drive. So I don't think it's a question of having the legal ability to do that, it's a question of having a principal have to lose a TA if that TA won't drive. And the, and you guys stop me if I'm wrong, but the, the recruiting difficulties, if your pool of potential TAs and child nutrition employees is limited to people who are also willing to drive a bus, it can then make it harder to fill those positions. So it's sort of a, it's a catch 22.
Yeah, we want to clarify. Yeah, I want to clarify too, our positions are not necessarily advertised as dual positions. It is just advertised as a requirement or a condition of employment for the position, so it's not technically a dual position.
And that's, yeah, I mean, that's fair enough. If it says must obtain a bus license to keep the position, I think that's, that's helpful. I think putting that you will have to drive is probably even more stark, but then, and again, it's a struggle of how much are you willing to limit, limit your pool of people who are willing to be a TA?
I mean, because really, I think what this boils down to, in, in my perspective anyways, is that if you have all of these people that have now signed these contracts, but then they are not driving, you know, it's, it's reduced our pool of drivers, but if the majority of those people actually were driving, then we would have so much more availability that they wouldn't be forced to drive that much. You know, they could only drive in the mornings, or they could only drive on Tuesdays and Thursdays, or, you know, only in the afternoons on Wednesdays and Fridays. You know, if we had all of these people that followed through on their contracts the way that they were supposed to when they were signed, then we wouldn't have to force these people that are actually doing the right thing and trying to be honest and follow through on their contracts. We wouldn't have to force them to, to cover every morning and every afternoon of every single day of the week.
That's correct.
Yeah, I would, I would very much be in, in favor of, of having a little more teeth with those, just, because I'm afraid we're going to lose the people that we have. That's, I mean, that's.
Oh, I can see that happening, for sure.
I mean, because I've, I mean, when I've shared this with all of our board members, is that I've heard from people that we have, and they feel like they're being punished.
These teacher, teacher assistants that are hired that are not driving?
Just to clarify, it's not strictly teacher assistants.
Other classified employees.
Custodians, data managers, bookkeepers.
And can I, I want to clarify one more thing too. Our classified employees, people who are in classified positions are not contracted. They are at-will employees, so they don't sign a contract. They do sign a statement of understanding, saying that they understand that a CDL is a condition of employment, but they, all of the ones that we have that are not driving fall under the medical exemption that is in the board policy currently. So it's not a just straight up refusal to drive, it is getting exempted.
So if, if there is a perception that people are refusing, you're saying that's not accurate?
No, I, I, oh, no. No, we do have people who have told us that they would prefer not to drive, but Chris and I work really hard to make sure that that is not acceptable, because you, you must follow our policy. The problem that we have is people who are following the policy and, and are receiving an exemption.
Because they have a medical exemption?
A medical exemption, under possibly questionable terms.
I see. And certainly, there are a lot of conditions that can disqualify you. I mean, high blood pressure is a lot of people, and that can disqualify you.
Do they actually get their license, or do they just complete the training?
Most of the time, they just go ahead and get a DOT physical and get exempted.
So they'll go to the medical examiner, and the medical examiner will fail them.
Correct.
So one of the things we also discussed was offering the opportunity for this extra pay to extend this to our educators. And I think, I think when we discussed it, we kind of talked about like the, the cost of that, because when you were giving your presentation, or maybe it was, I'm sorry, maybe it was Ms. Hines, yes, Ms. Hines, that it showed that for bus drivers doing dual jobs, that whichever one of their jobs was at the higher rate, that's what they would get.
Right, and, and for all, most of our, all of our dual employee drivers, their bus time is time and a half, because it's all overtime. So when you see these 16, $17 an hour, for that, for that person who's a dual employee, you're 25 and up in terms of that pay.
Were you asking about having teachers drive?
I mean, extending the, the invitation.
Oh, it's been extended.
Yeah, I mean, I think what can get complicated with that is that teachers are on a salary for a workday that includes before and after school, and so if they're then driving during that time, then they have to do their teaching duties another time. They, they can't really get paid twice to just do one job during the same time period. So it just, you know, it, it means that if a teacher's having to leave and go drive a bus in the afternoon, then they're going to have to complete their planning and other duties at night.
And how many of our school administrators have bus licenses?
You put me on the spot on that one.
Well, I mean, I'm just, I'm just saying, when, when we approve personnel that at the school level, they're the ones doing the hiring, and so.
I don't know.
A little bit of accountability?
Just off the top of my head, a guess, I'm, I'm figuring that number is zero. Oh, Mr. Dickens does have, yes, sorry, I forget about Mr. Dickens.
So one?
Just off the top of my head.
Possibly one. And Dr. Hamm?
Oh, and me.
But, but I, I meant like school administrators, not central office.
I think it's one now. I really do. And I will tell you, and Courtney and I have talked about this, when I was an assistant principal, I had my bus license, I only had three substitute drivers, they were all teachers, so my option was to burn them out or to go get on the bus myself. I did what I had to do.
And the only, I mean, I'm just asking because, and I don't want to make the hiring process any difficult, because I realize that we are in, you know, a shortage, and we are struggling to find people to fill other roles, like I fully see that, but then on the other side, you know, you have to think that maybe if you put that responsibility and that accountability a little bit more on the administrators, that maybe they would be a little bit more likely to make that a little clearer to people, what the expectation is.
I'm glad that's a decision I don't have to be a part of.
That's why we're here, Dr. Hamm. I'm looking for sol, I'm just looking for solutions, that's all.
And to be quite honest, you know, I'm a problem solver, that's what I like to do, and I've worked at this and offered all this, and I feel like I'm further away from where I wanted to be at this point than I thought, you know, than I was going to be. You know, we didn't, we didn't cancel any routes at all, hardly at all, last year, and then we had this situation at Wilton at the beginning of the year, which causes, it's fixed now, but I'm literally just plugging holes everywhere. I pay the cafeteria manager at Stovall to drive Holly every afternoon, I pay her mileage to drive for Holly in the afternoon to help with that, with that situation. And we, we're doing whatever we have to do. My goal was to have one staff member at each campus as a substitute driver, and I might have that in 30% of the schools right now. So there's just no easy solutions to this, other than just keep working at it, and I've got two people training that are non-employees this week, I'm, I'm hoping I'm going to get both of them at South Granville to fill those two spots. But then it's still, what comes next? Who, who goes home sick, or who resigns? And there is no solution behind that. So that's, I, I don't mean to just say the sky is falling, but in some cases, the sky could be falling very soon.
Well, and I'd like to take this opportunity to, to thank you, Chris, Dr. Hamm, for your leadership, because if not for you and your being so proactive, we would be in a lot worse off position. So I, I know it's, it's very challenging, and you've done a fantastic.
I've beaten this dead horse until we, until we get it done.
You've taken it, you've taken it head on, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. We do have one more slide on the, on the previous one. So a quick transition here. Next problem. And I don't know if I have any solutions for this one either. You know, I started off with something positive, you know, doing these things well. I mean, now, now's the crucial conversation part of this. So as I've gotten more comfortable in this role and had a moment to breathe and think about other problems other than the yellow bus situation, we need to look at our activity bus situation. So we have some immediate, I only know it's not future needs, it's immediate needs. Our activity bus fleet is aging, has aged, and has very high mileage. So before you use this handout, I'm sorry, I didn't get it in before presentations were due, but this is every activity bus in the county, the year it was made, and its current odometer reading the last time it was fueled. And you will notice on this list, three of them are not from this century. Bus 8321 and I started our public service to education together in 1996, and I'm, I'm retiring in a couple of years. So the life expectancy of these buses in many of these cases is, is gone. I was terrified, we have one activity bus in the entire county that has a wheelchair lift, and it had to go to Charlotte. Fortunately, at last minute, they didn't need that bus, but that bus is 22 years old. The wheelchair system inside of it's outdated, we can't get new seat belts for it. So, and this is all local cost, state funds supplies everything for yellow buses. Currently, on, on this state contract price, an activity bus is about $130,000. Wheelchair lift, about $150,000. I even, you see some of these are mini buses, this is the weirdest thing. I, I asked for a quote on some mini buses, you would think, okay, 72 passenger versus 18, 75% of the cost. Nope, mini buses are going for about $95,000 right now, because they're so popular.
Is it because they get better gas mileage?
That, and there, there's. That, and there, there's just, it's supply and demand at this point. So...
The mini buses used for transporting EC kids?
No, this is for different field trips, you know, smaller athletic teams, like the golf team or the tennis team, those types of things. FFA at South Granville uses it a lot for their events, because it's a small group.
So, these are all activity buses?
Yes, yes. These are all white activity buses. So, there's no easy solutions here, and it looks like just inheriting this, there's never really been a plan for replenishing this. So, there is an immediate need, I said two to four, that is probably a misstatement, it's probably four to six, would one of those be in a wheelchair? And even then, so we replace six, you've still got eight with 150,000 miles plus. How long do you expect those to run? Another three or four years, another 30, 40,000 mile? So, we're going to have to look for some creative solutions. I've reached out to some of our vendors for some different, they offer some different lease purchase models, there may be a grant coming out in the spring for propane-powered activity buses. We've just, we've got, we can't just ignore this anymore, and it's going to be expensive. There's just no way around it. So, this will be my next thing that I keep charging at while we're trying to fix the driver situation, too.
Keep that good news covered.
Yes.
So, thank you, Dr. Hamm. And board members, you can expect us to bring probably at our next regular meeting a proposal of at least some initial action in this area with a plan on how to pay for it.
Right, and I can say, if you noticed, the bus that was bought in 2020, 8331, that was actually, that cost was actually split with the county commissioner's 50/50. So, I don't know if that would be an option in the future, but I think we leave no stone unturned in this. Thanks. Oh, I'm next.
Thank you, sunshine.
Yeah, you know me. Keep it real. All right, so, I'm back again with our RFID update. So, at the August meeting, I was asked to go out and see if there were other vendors who may want to put in a bid for this, just to make sure we were getting the best bang for our buck and using our money wisely. So, I did do that. I reached out to those three vendors here that you see on the screen. Okay, that's all right. Made calls to all of them. After an initial call with Safelite and Alpha Card, I was told that they had not worked with our supplier of GPS before, Senovia, but a consultant would contact me regarding those options, I'm still waiting for those phone calls. And I did hear from Zebra Technologies, but they told me that they normally deal with more high-end, expensive projects, and I kept asking them to define what high-end expensive was, and he would. He said he mainly worked with university levels. He said he would send me some information, he sent me links to their catalog, catalog had no prices, and I've not heard back from him either. So, based on just going out there and, and searching, I, I think CI Solutions is best-equipped for us to, to meet all of our needs. As a reminder, this project would start off with the bus ridership. We did have a number of students at the beginning of the year who got on the wrong bus. These cards will help with that, because it'll flash and say, "No, this kid can't ride this bus," that sort of thing. Then we will move into possible other options like library, cafeteria, possibilities down the road for building entry, athletic entry. Now, we'll start off, it's going to be very phased, where actually, if approved, we'll start piloting at a couple of schools first before we go out district-wide. But just based on those experiences, I would love to see us go with CI Solutions at this point.
Thanks for going out and double-checking that.
My pleasure.
Motion to be presented?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're back in open session. We need a motion to approve the personnel report as presented.
So moved.
Motion's been made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. The only other thing right now is just to remind everyone that on October 16th, the Board of Education Works Session will take place at 4:00 PM here at the Mary Potter Center for Education, and the next regular board meeting will be November 6th here at the Mary Potter Center for Education. And obviously, there may be committee meetings coming up, so you'll be getting emails about different things out there. Everyone drive home safely. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for your hard...